See all of you here tonight. Before we start our meeting, would you please bow with me in a word of prayer? We gather here tonight in service to our city, Nacogdoches. We are grateful to city staff and the work they do on a daily basis, and to our citizens who volunteer their time and talents in a variety of ways. As a council, may we be honest stewards, and may our work tonight be blessed with insight, understanding, and wisdom. Help us to represent all members of our community and to conduct ourselves in a spirit of cooperation in deliberations and decisions that will impact our city and our citizens today and in the future. Amen.
Amen.
So, welcome to tonight's meeting of September 17th, 2019. I will now call the meeting to order, and our first agenda item is open forum, and we do have someone that has signed up to speak. Carrie Lemon, if you would come forward. The open forum is the public's opportunity to address council on any matter related to the city that is not on tonight's agenda. Our rules and procedures for council meetings apply to the open forum and include disrupting a public meeting as a violation of state law, and no cursing is allowed. Your comments are limited to three minutes. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, city council generally cannot discuss, consider, or take action on matters not listed on tonight's agenda. So, welcome. Good evening.
Thank you, thank you. So, I'm here tonight representing resilient Nacogdoches, and I just wanted to inform the council about an action that's going to happen on Friday in front of the courthouse. It's a part of the global climate strike that is happening really all over the world. I don't know if you guys are familiar with Greta Thunberg, but she's been a young woman that's been speaking out about the importance of us talking about climate change and how it's going to impact all of us. And so, we're having this action. It will be from noon to one that day, rain or shine. Bring an umbrella. We invite you all to come out. Again, it is in solidarity with the youth that are speaking and really wanting to do this for our children and speak out for them. We will also have another action that same day at 7:30. We're going to do a light brigade message. I don't know if any of you have been able to see those. They've been in the newspaper some, but they're really a beautiful way to share a message with the community so that people can see what's important and what members of the community think are important. If it is raining, we will not do the light brigade. We'll reschedule that for another day. It's actually a week of action that's taking place all around the world, as I said, and around the country. So, I hope that if you don't know and haven't heard a Greta Thunberg speak, that you all will take some time to investigate that. I really feel like that our community is uniquely posed to do things because we're a small community and yet also not really a rural community, to make changes that can impact our future, and that it's important that we start talking about that as a community. So, great. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. We will now move on to items to be removed from the consent agenda. If council has something they would like to remove, now would be the time. If not, chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. We approve the consent agenda as it is presented here. If no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. For our regular agenda, agenda item number five, I do have a conflict with that agenda item, so I'm going to turn it over now to our mayor pro tem, Roy Bolden.
And we have city manager Jim Jeffers. Thank you.
Hi, pro tem mayor. Madam Mayor, City Council, this particular item is simply removing the expenditure for the donation, or actually the contribution, that the city makes to the Boys and Girls Club. It's $30,000 because of the conflict that the mayor has. He's employed by the Boys and Girls Club. So, this item's pulled out of the budget, voted on separately, and then we'll be talking about the budget itself. But Mayor Bolden, after public comment, be happy to answer any questions that the city council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Jeffers. Is there anyone would like to make a comment for against the regular agenda item number five, line item budget for Boys and Girls Club? Come forth. State your name and address.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. Andrew Shep, I live in the city limits of Nacogdoches. I am on the Boys and Girls Club board, but I fully support the city's donation to the Boys and Girls Club. You know, it was discussed before Mayor Brophy was hired, and I think there's no improper influence there, but I would urge you to approve the expenditure and add some more if you can next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Shep. Anyone else? If not, ask for a motion to, for the consent, I mean, for the agenda item, line item budget for Boys and Girls Club, funding agreement for fiscal year October the first, 2019, and then in September the third, 2020.
I'll make a motion that we pass, agenda item number five as it's written.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Any comment from the council? If not, then all in favor of agenda item number five, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion approved.
Thank you, Mr. Bolden.
Do I have to give my position? Can I continue on?
Oh, would you like?
No. No, I'm not doing that.
Okay. Moving on to agenda item number six, this is approving and adopting the annual budget for our fiscal year beginning October 1st. Mr. Jeffers?
Madam Mayor, it's great to have competent leadership back in, at the helm. I want to just mention that there have been a couple of additions to the budget from the last discussions, part of this under the direction of the city council, but $19,500 has been added for the software application, which will allow city employees as well as citizens to report requests for service. Removal tree limbs will be one of those items, pothose, streetlights that are out, and various other city services. There was also $22,250 added for herbicide spraying. Council discussed that at the last meeting, and after consultation with the street department, we feel like that that will, is a good amount to initiate that program. Also, there was $24,000 added for a utility construction vehicle, pickup truck, and for our GIS technician. And last but not least, I've added $25,000 for recycling services in the budget. That item has been there in the past. It's out of the sanitation department. No expenditures will be made without my approval, and also, we notify the council. One item that will be there is on the glass recycling to help to offset the hauling charges, which are about $1,000 a year. I think most of the money will be spent on a campaign, which will be discussed later. Madam Mayor, after public comment, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council might have about the proposed budget.
Thank you. Okay, so is there anyone here tonight? We've already had two public hearings, but we are still giving you an opportunity to give your comments on our proposed budget. So, is there anyone here that has a comment they would like to make? Okay. Counsel, any questions or clarifications about these additions, about the proposed budget?
I have a question and a comment.
Yes.
And this might be a little, and it's going to sound like an ignorant question, because it is, but the herbicide spraying, do we know what kind we're using, and has it been tested for carcinogen bad stuff?
Short answer is that we will be contracting out, so I'm sure that all that's going to, will be addressed when we consider an award for bid for the services. But that legitimate question, but no, we don't have that information simply because we haven't reached out to any companies other than get a cost per mile on spraying.
But it's something that we should be able to once that time comes.
Absolutely.
That we should be able to address. Okay. And then the other comment I wanted to make, I wanted to thank city staff for working so hard on this budget and explaining everything particularly to non-monetary people. And also, I think that the property tax, the increase over the effective tax rate, my reasoning for thinking that that's a positive thing is because I think that our city staff does a really good job and deserves to be paid at the very least what their counterparts are paid, and that will allow us to be able to do that for them next year to allow for raises. And so, I mean, I think that while nobody likes higher taxes, I think that that's a really legitimate reason for our higher tax.
Okay, any other thoughts, questions? Okay, and chair will entertain a motion for approval of our annual budget.
Move to approve our annual budget.
I'll second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. We approve agenda item number six as presented, say it that way, and if no further discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Agenda item number seven is considering the ordinance ratifying and setting the tax rate. Mr. Jeffers?
Madam Mayor, City Council, the proposed tax rate is 61.4 cents. That is, what, 61, yeah, .4, I said that correctly. That is a tax increase over the effective tax rate of four cents. After public comment, I'll be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Okay. And like we did with the budget, we have had two public hearings on the, setting the tax rate for the next fiscal year. Are there any other comments that anyone would like to make about that this evening? Okay. During that, council members, do you have any additional questions or comments for Mr. Jeffers?
My comment should have probably been placed there, so.
It's still applicable.
Cut and paste.
Okay, cut and paste, we will do that. So, motion.
I motion that the property tax be, rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $0.610.614 per $100 valuation, which is effectively a 6.69% increase in the tax rate.
Second.
Moved and seconded. And if no further discussion, all of those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes. Okay, and now we get to some fun stuff. So, it is, what, 5:45, and we are, that gives you a little bit of a timeframe. We're going to start our workshop. We have two sessions, two topics that we're going to discuss tonight. Council member Fisher is going to lead the first one, which is on recycling, and I will lead the second one, which is on updating our comprehensive plan. So, you have the floor. Go right ahead.
Okay. Sorry if I stumble over my words. I just, just drove in from very unpleasant court in Dallas this afternoon. So, the reason that I wanted to have a work session on recycling is not to say, "All right, decided, let's do curbside tomorrow, let's buy the trucks." I want this to be the beginning of a conversation, the beginning of planning, the beginning of consideration of things that we can do now to get the ball rolling on, on recycling. And before I start with any of this, I want to give a public thank you to Mr. Steve Chisholm, the Nacogdoches recycling guru. He did not want public credit, but that's too bad. He's done a lot of heavy lifting and legwork on this, and I really appreciate it.
Public comment first.
Public comment before I start talking, yes? Anybody want to have anything to say about recycling, please come forward. No, it's okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I'm Kathryn Parrish-Witbeck. I reside at 950 FM 3314, approximately three quarters of a mile outside the city limits. However, I have worked for 34 years within the city limits at 4310 Appleby-San Roan Road, fondly known as the New High School. I am here to tell you that I see recycling at Nacogdoches High School for at least the last 10 years. I am speaking on my behalf, not Nacogdoches ISD and not Nacogdoches High School, but this is what I have witnessed, is our students have gotten excited both in ecology club, then to, onto student council, and finally interact the last couple of years have taken it on. And I have seen the recycling of just paper grow and grow so that every week our students were collecting about anywhere from 20 to 30 bins, and that's a very nebulous estimate, so. But we have done that, and the students have been excited about it. It's given, and I've just enjoyed seeing that. I could make other comments of what I've seen, but I don't want to. But I do think there is an opportunity, there are opportunities other than curbside service for recycling. So, I appreciate you listening to my comments this evening, and come see nonsense too, and that probably should have been in the open forum.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm Kyle Childress, pastor of Austin Heights Baptist Church here in Nacogdoches. I live within the city limits and have just celebrated 30 years as the pastor of Austin Heights. Our congregation is very involved in recycling. One way or another, we've been involved for over 20 years. We try to cut down on how much styrofoam and plastic we use at the church. We go back to the old-fashioned and frugal practices of actually washing dishes and things like that. But behind all of that is this sense of our calling, and that we're put on this earth to help take care of it and to be good stewards. I'm firmly in agreement with the Psalmist who said, "The earth is the Lord's and the fullness thereof." As a preacher, it helps for me to agree with the text of the scripture, so. But in other words, we are responsible, called to be responsible guests on God's planet. And if I'm going on a trip and I have house guest, a house sitting for me, it's really good to come home and the house is taken care of and clean, and they didn't leave cans all over the house, and trash, and garbage, and so on. And in a sense, that's our responsibility as stewards on this planet, is to take care of it, to care and care for each other. The day before yesterday, I preached on the parable of the prodigal son who went off to a far country, part of his prodigality, spending money everywhere, but in my mind, in our context, he's throwing plastic and paper and cardboard and pla, cans and so on, everywhere. I would like, in that parable, he comes to himself in the middle of a pigsty. I would like for us to continue to be a town that says, "You know, we're coming to ourselves long before it ever turns into a pigsty." We want to have a town that we are coming to ourselves and thinking about how to care for it. It's a beautiful place. This is my home. It's your home, and so I encourage you to continue to do this, this recycling. I mean, it's a great thing. My mentor, Wendell Berry, says, he's a farmer in Kentucky, "There are no unsacred places, only sacred places and desecrated places." This is a sacred place in Nacogdoches, and let's keep it that way. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jordan Johnson. I live at 3214 Madison Lane, and I'm a graduate student in gender studies and environmental health at Emory University. Our mismanagement of waste has staggering costs for all of us. According to the World Bank, more than 2.1 billion metric tons of waste are generated globally each year, and US consumers produce three times the global average of waste, including 234 pounds of plastic per person per year. Particles from those plastics have made their way into our water, our air, our bodies, even in drops of rain as they fall from the sky. Americans create more waste and recycle less than any other industrial nation. This is a complex problem that is rapidly approaching a global crisis. But investing in recycling and waste reduction programs right here in our community is one way that we can respond to this far-reaching issue. It's one opportunity to meet a global challenge with a strong local solution. Researchers have emphasized the importance of reducing landfill waste, and part of that has to do with source reduction, changing the way that we consume products. But another part of that has to do with waste management, changing the way we dispose of those products. We don't often like to think about waste. We don't tend to ask hard questions about how it's managed after it leaves our personal lives. Most folks haven't made it out to their city landfill, so it can sometimes be difficult to visualize this space. And we often remain distant from our own role in the process, wishfully believing that trash simply goes away when it leaves our curbside. But robust recycling programs do more than simply take recyclables off our hands. They ask us to rethink our relationship to waste. They encourage us to start seeing our landfill as an incredibly precious, finite resource, treating the space as something we actively manage and conserve for the shared benefit of our community now and in the future. As landfills reach capacity and trash continues to inundate ecosystems worldwide, municipalities are forced to reckon with the real cost of waste, with the reality that there simply is no way. Given the complexity of contemporary waste management, not just any recycling program will do. We know that recycling incorrectly, while well-intended, can sometimes have a detrimental impact, as contamination lowers the quality of recycled materials and limits their usability. Compound this with issues related to illegal dumping, and the situation gets worse. A recycling facility with employees to receive and sort materials will curb illegal dumping and contamination while creating sustainable jobs and giving our community the opportunity to conserve space in our landfill. As overseas receivers and recycling facilities continue to tighten standards and increasingly reject low-quality recyclables, we have to start thinking about how to build robust waste management infrastructure in our own backyards. Since the US has been exporting waste since the early 2000s, this requires changes to consumer practices and public outreach as well as infrastructure. Most places in the US haven't bothered to develop facilities to process recyclables locally, so our nation is now in this moment of catching up. The Association of Plastic Recyclers has emphasized the cascading effects of this lag, explaining that now we're trying to deal with a 21st century packaging stream based on 20th century infrastructure. The group emphasizes that there's still a strong market out there for recycling, but we need the capability to produce good, clean material. Retaining the ability to reliably sort materials has allowed some recycling facilities to survive and even thrive in the contemporary market, while less rigorous facilities have in some cases had to shutter their doors in the wake of China's decision to stop importing low-quality mixed recycling. The upfront costs of a manned facility pale in comparison to the long-term costs of inaction on this issue. Over time, the real costs of waste management become more apparent. We can see how our lack of initiative in the present offloads costs onto the future, shifting the burden down the line while complicating an already complex problem. With a recycling center dedicated to keeping materials separated and clean, we can compete on the market and save space. Programs such as the Closed Loop Fund award funds to communities seeking to upgrade their facilities to address the contemporary challenges of waste management and recycling. Combined with public outreach and education, such an approach can make a huge difference in the present and future of Nacogdoches. We have the opportunity to position ourselves strategically within the changing landscape of the US recycling industry by focusing on producing clean, sorted recyclables. Recycling isn't a silver bullet solution to the problems of waste management in the US, rather, it's one tool in the box. We also have to reduce our consumption and hold corporations accountable for the consequences of needless waste production. Nonetheless, recycling remains a crucial step at the local level, an important part of a broader plan to decrease waste and expand the life of our landfill while protecting the ecological integrity of our community. As markets for recyclables continue to fluctuate and processing practices continue to evolve, there are, of course, many unknowns. We do know, however, that space and resources are both finite, and it's past time we start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 1503 Terrace Wood, Nacogdoches. But I'm here to speak to you today primarily, or at least first, as a bottle tosser. When I can, I help with the people who toss bottles into the rollaway on Monday and Fridays. Actually, my wife, who's retired, is able to do it much more frequently than I am. But one of the things I just wanted to communicate to you is that the times that I'm able to go there, and it only takes 30 to 45 minutes typically, I'm always impressed by the number of citizens from the community who are just driving up, bringing their recyclables there. Again, in a relatively short time, again, typically, I'll see three to five cars come with recyclables. So, I think there is support on the part of the community for a recycling program. Also, when I have talked with faculty members at SFA, this is actually my 37th year of teaching at SFA, so many of them have expressed not only support for a recycling program, but disappointment because the university's recycling program has been tied to the city's recycling program. And as the city has been forced to retrench, that meant that less and less of the university's recyclable material was being recycled. One of the things that is recognized in survey after survey is that, and a part of students, the millennial generation cares greatly about climate change and also recycling. The, now, I'm not saying that, you know, there will be students who will come to SFA simply because the city increases its recycling profile, but that would be one thing that might attract students to SFA and encourage students to stay in Nacogdoches once they graduate. So, much of the recent increase in SFA's enrollment has not been bringing bodies to Nacogdoches, but rather, it's been online. And the more bodies we can bring to Nacogdoches, that in turn provides an economic benefit to the city and its businesses, so that there is economic benefit in increasing the profile of our recycling program. And I think if we were to do that, and students are already helping with glass tossing, but there's a ready pool of people who would be interested in internships or part-time jobs, or upon graduation, maybe even full-time jobs in terms of recycling. We have a sustainable community development major on campus. We have an environmental science program on campus. An enlarged recycling program would be just the kind of experience that these students are looking for while they are in college and afterwards. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Evening. Councilpeople? Madam Mayor, I'm Steve Chisholm. I live just south of Appleby, so I'm not in the city limits, but I come to town often. As you've heard far more articulately than I could certainly do, wow, thank you all so much for your comments. I think what I would like to do is just sort of bring the whole, kind of a big picture kind of an idea, and this is a long, complicated conversation. It can't be compacted into three minutes, it just can't. So, if, I'll just try to give the big picture, then if you have specific questions about kind of some of the things that we're wanting to propose or work toward, I'll respond to questions as you have them. But essentially, what we're looking at is the difference between short-term cost and long-term benefit. When we look at, as was so beautifully pointed out by Ms. Johnson, the long-term cost of landfill space is not going down. the, the long-term cost of landfill space is not going down. It is going up and up and up. Every square foot has value. I like to say nothing has value. It's kind of, space has value. And that value has now or will very soon exceed the short-term cost of actually doing the recycling. So that even if you have a break-even kind of program with your paper, plastic, glass, cardboard, you're going to more than offset that in the savings that you're not having to spend in the landfill. This is, this is the big picture that I think we, as a community, really need to look at. So how do we get there? Obviously, source reduction, getting people to not buy this stuff in the first place. You know, using our vote with our, we vote with our forks, we vote with our wallets, we vote with our, you know, whatever, the things that we buy and the things that we don't buy. But having a robust recycling program sets us up to succeed over time. Without that, there, we don't really have any, any, any real chance of attracting the kind of end-users that we would be able to sell this stuff to. And that's what we need. We need to not only have a robust system, but one that would, like Jordan again, was so articulate, a good, clean, well-separated product that we have, that is an attractive thing to end-users that come and locate here in Nacogdoches County, provide jobs, economic growth, you know, it's just, it's, it's, it's just a win-win for everybody. But it's not something like we've been talking about that we have to do today. Today, we have to start really thinking about planning for the future. You know, I, I understand. What we've done in the satellite drop-off program has been outstanding, and it's a great first step. So now, we need to think about, okay, what do we do next? How do we improve on this? How do we take what we've done and grow it and gradually increase that program? And then perhaps gradually increase warehousing space at the landfill so that we can begin to bale, compact, and store, say like one and two plastic or paper in, long enough for the markets to change, which they will. We all know that, I mean, you know, they just bombed Saudi Arabia. Oil prices are going through the roof here shortly. They're not going to go down all, forever. So as commodities come back, we need to be staged and ready to be able to take advantage of those opportunities. I mean, right now, obviously, this is a real challenge. But what we have right now is the opportunity to turn those challenges into economic opportunity, growth, and be a part of this new green revolution that is coming. It is coming. So, education, public awareness, all these things have a factor in, in, in what we're talking about. This is, we got, and we've got to think about big picture. You know, we're small, but you think globally. You know, and so, based on my experience, and, and I'll sit down and hush, like Bob was saying, is that every time we're there, I speak to people who come, who are coming through, dropping off their recyclables while we're there doing glass. You know, and I go oftentimes at odd times through the day, and I'm always talking to people. I said, "Well, thank you for bringing this stuff." Is, you know, you, "Do you mind doing this?" "No, no, I love doing it." "I'm glad we're recycling here. I'm, you know, I don't know why we don't do more." So, I know from my own personal experience that the people here are willing to bring us the recycling. You know, if we can have the little blue bag program that the, that the, the Dotsons are doing, great. I mean, I support them 100%. But the truth is that people, if we set up a proper type of facility, people will bring it to us. We've proved it. I can show you. Come down, talk to folks, you know, they, they're excited. So, again, I'll be, I'll be quiet now, but if you have, if you have, like I said, this is a big, a big issue, and if you have further questions, I'd be happy to speak further.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Closing public comment, now I go.
Thank you, everybody, for your comments a lot. I mean, I, I agree with a lot of what was said, and, and some of this is going to be an echo of that. As I said, and as Mr. Chisholm said, I want this work session to be the beginning of a conversation and the beginning of planning on what we can do moving forward. The state of our current recycling program is due basically to two things. One, a major market downturn, as Mr. Chisholm explained, making it not economically viable for smaller communities to, to have robust recycling programs. And two, the city's legitimate, I think, concern with public participation in a recycling program. I think that when you get something that's not working, you identify the reasons why it's not working and you see if you can do something about it and move forward. So, the market downturn, as Mr. Chisholm stated, plastics, it's, it is cheap to create new plastic because that's tied to oil prices, and oil prices are low right now. But markets, and specifically the oil market, it's a volatile market, and we know that those prices are going to go back up. So, so the question is there, what we do in this temporary time while the market is down to prepare for an upswing? I think the, the, the problem with participation, like I said, is, is legitimate. I think that when we were doing the curbside, the figure that I heard was what, 10 to 20% participation? And even within that 10 to 20% participation, which is very low, there were contaminated recycling loads. And so, really, if you think about it, we were probably having a larger carbon footprint by running the trucks around than we were by providing any sort of good with the recycling that we were doing. But I do think that things have changed in the last 10 years, even in the last five years. As Mr. Chisholm and others stated, there, they have seen a boost in participation at the drop-off site. I think that global awareness on the importance of, of recycling is, is spreading. And I also think that, that public participation in a recycling program is something that be, that can be addressed with a comprehensive public education program on why it's important to recycle, what's recyclable and what's not, what does contaminating your recycling load mean, those kinds of things. And also, I want to echo, if you are not, either you all here or listening at home are not swayed by the green-type arguments, it makes economic sense, right? Investing in a recycling program saves landfill, landfill space, which is incredibly precious of some others, as some others have said. So, like I said, my goal for the work session today is, is to have a plan, to start planning for the future, to see what we can do now to make an impact. And that comes down to two things, to source and use reduction and to supporting the current recycling program that we have now. And that really boils down to developing a sustainable, comprehensive, aggressive, public education campaign. So, really what I'm asking vaguely is two things. Continue the drop-off site that we have, but that has to be done in conjunction with developing a big public education plan to boost that participation while at the same time looking to see what we can do to improve our current recycling program, whether that be a manned or womaned site, drop-off site, where separation of recyclables can be done at the front end, where contamination, where we can minimize contamination at the front end. And then I think the other purpose of this really is just a call for help, an all-hands-on-deck kind of things. Nacogdoches has a great resource in the brains of the people who live here. And so, I, I, I am asking for cooperation and, and contribution from community organizations, from community members, from local businesses, from SFA and the, the brilliant people there to help come up with, with some sort of solution and some sort of path forward. Mayor Brophy, I do have concrete action items that I, I can present and propose, but I think that it's probably better for council to discuss and have ideas and, and questions before going to that.
Okay, great. So, Mr. Anderson, would you like to start off with some, any comments or questions or?
Let's start with me this time, huh?
I told you last, I remembered. Always, my head always naturally turns this way. And if you'd like to pass, you can pass.
I guess I will start by saying that I, I'm very much in favor of our, of our working towards a municipal solution. I, I am very appreciative that there are private citizens who are, who are very helpful and interested in promoting the cause of recycling. I think, long-term, the best solution is, is going to be at the municipal level, but finding a way to make that economically feasible is going to be a tricky issue. It's not impossible. It is, as has been mentioned by a few people, somewhat market-dependent at this point. But as Mr. Chisholm mentioned, that, that market is only likely to improve in time. Now, over what period of time, I don't know. But, but I, I am very enthusiastic about all of the, the interest in the community in doing this. And my, my wife is involved with Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful, and they are working on doing a little bit more education, specifically on source reduction, because I think that that, in the immediate term, is going to be more important almost than, than finding a longer-term recycling solution. And that will, to a certain degree, help buy us time to, to work on a, a very sustainable recycle, municipal recycling solution for it. And I, I really appreciate everyone's comments, and I really appreciate Ms. Fisher's time and effort into putting this together. And I, I do look forward to working on a solution that, that we can actually live with that everybody will get on board with, because it is an extremely complicated issue. That's about my only comment right now.
That's great.
I'll come up with something else.
That was very good. I, I, that was fine. Mr. Bolden?
One of the things that Ms. Johnson stated was what happens, citizens are not aware of what happens to trash after it leaves the curbs. And we do have issues with citizens' awareness as to how trash is from the curb to wherever it goes. And some of us don't even know. But, and we, we're going to have to get more of the neighborhoods involvement, citywide. But, and I was sitting here thinking about items that, I don't know if they recycle, and I'd like foam takeout trays and et cetera. Our church, we do approximately 12 programs a year, and we usually do 80-plus lunches, and we use foam cups, foam takeout trays, foam cake trays. That, approximately like 1,020 of those a year, and you count the ministerial allowance, which other churches also do this, you're looking at over 30,000 pieces of foam that goes into the landfill. I'm not sure, you may have to tell me, if, if there's a program nationwide as to where they can recycle foam? I didn't think so, yeah. But, yeah, we, we're going to have to basically start at home, making everyone aware of the burden it places on the landfills.
Mr. Hans?
Sure. I love Ms. Johnson's idea on the sorting facility. I'd be really curious to see, is there a case study out there where this has been done? Because it, there's, like Mr. Anderson mentioned, there, there's an interesting position we're in, where I do think we're going to be converting from plastics to paper at the federal level or international level, or you can feel it coming almost. Because it is a pretty substantial issue that you really can't hide from anymore. So I'd be curious to see, is there a case study? Is there a think tank that's done deep, deep-dive research into this to show some sort of sustainability? Or if not, what kind of subsidy would a local municipality have to, of our size-ish regional? I don't know how big we're, we're looking at there. Is there something out there that we could begin to digest so we're not reinventing the wheel? Because our staff is fantastic, but that is a, that is a huge undertaking and a huge problem to try to solve. So I'd love to try to lean on some of those think tanks or somewhere where we could get some, some information there. But it would be exciting to be one of the first in the region to, to have some sort of a solution that could be transitioned as the use of plastic changes. I think that's great.
I tell you what, the thing I most, like you said, was the all-hands-on-deck approach, because I believe that's the way we get everyone integrated and we get all the participation we can possibly have. And when you do that, each group excites the next group. It's, it's very, very contagious. I will tell Mr. Bolden that having been in the food service industry for many, many years, costs are dramatically coming down on recyclable-to-go containers. So that can be a part of our program, sourcing out those types of items. And I can, I'm real excited that you brought that up, because that is huge. It also does take a lot of time. I know when we formed a committee about, oh, gosh, it's probably been almost 12 years ago, I think, when we formed that recycling, you were on that committee, we did. You know, they do take time, because you do want to do proper research and you do want to have the right conversations, but it can't keep you from moving forward. And I think that's what hap, then we stopped to come up with the ideas, and then we started. And now, it's like, it doesn't matter what you do. As long as we keep doing it, we can always adapt. So that is something else that, that you had mentioned. Let's see, sourcing, you sort of support, recycling campaign. Everything you said was spot-on. I think that you're at a point to where you can work with the staff to start, with Mr. Jeffers approval, of course, to start getting, pulling some things together, because you have, are so connected with some constituents that are, are concerned about this. And that way, we can see from a municipal standpoint where we are right now and what that might look like. And I would be very anxious to see what those, what that might be. Does he want to, want to add anything else after hearing others?
I, I'll just say that I, I would, you know, for the city's part, I, I think we, the city certainly has in the past worked with Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful, but helps support them in education, because that's going to be sort of the, the first front, is educating on both how recycling works and doesn't work, and particularly source reduction for, for a short-term issue. Because that's something that a lot of people don't think about. And if faced, you know, if it's putting a flyer and water bills, whatever, may work. I think if people are faced with some, some of the very real jarring statistics, it, it might, in time, help to increase both public interest and potential public participation in recycling here, which, which then gets it to a point of economic feasibility.
Well, it doesn't change, take long to change habits, and we've seen that, even though we made it public about the reduction in our recycling, it has not reduced the public's bringing recyclables to drop-off. They still have that habit, and, and we're grateful that they still have that.
True. I was going to say the same thing. I, I think for us to eat into the bell curve, right now you've got those that are fiery passionate about it, that are participating, and that's fantastic. I think we can eat into that bell curve, though, by certainly some education. And then, in the process- And then, in the process, as you're doing your research, if you find that it is a staggering cost to have a curbside, don't, don't stop there. Don't, don't let that be a deterrent, because I think, like we saw with the Dodsons, I think the free market will, there's a lot of people that would pay 10, 15, 20, 50 bucks. I think there's, there's ways to eat into that, that bell curve, but I think we could get a lot better participation in the 10 or 15, or whatever it was we had before.
Yeah, and as we see their business develop and grow and how the community responds to it, then, I mean, that opens up possibilities for public-private partnerships, for how the city can help out if they're the ones doing it. Okay, so, just to, to wrap up and kind of concretely summarize a couple of things that, I mean, everybody already said, which thank you for your thoughtful responses and suggestions. Since this is a work session and we're not voting, I guess just let me know if you have a problem with any of these things. But, and like I said, these are echoing a lot of the things that you guys said. One, explore, have city staff, and, and I'm happy, happy to help, and, and community members, I'm sure, who are passionate and knowledgeable about this are happy to help. But explore the possibility and feasibility of transitioning to a manned-woman drop-off site. Obviously not to start next week, but what steps we would need to take, how much it would cost, what it would require, basically what Garth was saying, whether we would need to reinvent the wheel, whether somebody's done, done already the legwork on this. That's one. Two, we mentioned this, didn't mention it just now, but we mentioned this a while ago, and I remember Jay, you had a comment about whether there might be some state regulations about it. But maybe explore the feasibility of collecting and compacting bailing, storing, plastic. It's possible that, probably likely, that there are some regulations that would get in the way of that. But if there are not, and if that's something feasible that we can do to get ready for a market upturn and to save landfill space, I think that that's worth it. I want to ask the city manager to work in conjunction with Keep Nacogdoches Beautiful to come up with an aggressive and sustainable plan for a public education campaign regarding, not just recycling, but also reusing and, and source reduction, which is what, what Jay mentioned. And finally, these are more nebulous asks, I guess, but for community partners to, to help with the dissemination of, of information, like Shelley said, like Mayor Brophy said, all hands on deck. And, and, and when everybody has a stake in the game, it just, it spreads much more effectively. So the Chamber of Commerce, for example, helping with dissemination of information, or Nedco continuing to recruit for a recycling center, to have that on their radar, or to recruit end-users and renewable-based industries. And that is what I have.
Well, that is outstanding. You did a, a great job leaving that discussion. That's a lot of good information.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you would like to say, or you wanna?
I hear.
You hear, you hear. Okay, well, that's, that is great. Okay. So that will conclude our discussion for, just for this evening on recycling. And we will move to updating our comprehensive plan. So if there's anyone that would not wanna stay for that, now would be the time to, you, you are welcome to take your leave. And for anyone who is here still, would you have any comments about the comprehensive plan before we begin discussing it? Yeah, Vicki's going to come in. Good evening, nice to see you.
Thank you, good to see all of you. I'm Vicki Lenell. I live on Cox Street in, in the city. I was, I was all ready for recycling. I hadn't really, I didn't realize this was on the agenda. But I don't know what, what you guys are thinking about the comprehensive plan, but my concern is, I don't know how much the comprehensive plan is actually considered or followed. And I would hope that if we create a new one or even look back into the old one, we have some sort of accountability to reference it, to follow it, to, to actually make it a working document. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Mantey, good evening.
Good evening, council. I, I just wanted to say I'm, I'm happy this topic is being brought up. Normally, cities are advised to update their comprehensive plan every five to 10 years. The last update we had was in 2003, and so I think this discussion is very important. And I think normally there's a perception that comprehensive plan is a planning document, basically related to the planning departments, but that is not the issue. It deals with every other department in the city. It lays out future plans for the growth of the city. What the city wanted in 2003 is different from what the city needs in 2019. People, society changes a lot, and it's very dynamic. That is why it's advised to update it every five years. And so as the discussion is going on, I want us to know that a comprehensive plan can include parks, engineering, recycling, and everything, including legal and everything that happens in the city. So let's look at it as a broader document that guides how the city wants to go, to the extent that I think the comprehensive plan even guides budgets, because based on what we want in a comprehensive plan, it, it determines how we wanna budget and how we wanna see the city grow. So I'm, I'm happy this discussion is going on, and hopefully next year we can allocate a lot of money to update it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Well, our city's comprehensive plan belongs to the citizens of Nacogdoches. It is not, I think some people think it is just a guide for staff. And it should be considered a living document. And I know in the past, city staff and council continue to use it as a guide when making decisions or making plans for different issues that come up. And as Mr. Mantey alluded, our last plan was done in 2003, which was 16 years ago. However, two years ago, the Parks and Recs and Trails section was updated. So we now have a new master plan for that section. So the idea is that instead of taking on the time and expense of doing a whole new plan, because this, the one we have right now is a great document, and it was very, very well-done. It just needs to be updated. And you, as a citizen, you can find the comprehensive plan online at the city's website. And so what I wanted to do was to go over briefly the different sections, so you know what's included in our comprehensive plan. Section one is actually an introduction. It includes an overview of Nacogdoches and explains the purpose of having a comprehensive plan and its intended use. The second section is a community profile, and that includes, oh, I guess, fact-based information of population, employment statistics, and other demographic characteristics. And I would suggest that we can, staff can update that easily after the 2020 census. Section three, vision and goals. This is the shared present and future vision of citizens. It lists in no particular order expectations for future development, economic development, mobility, public facilities and services, recreation, national resources, and other aspects of community life. Section four is the environment and natural resources. This section covers long-term conservation and protection of our natural resources and identifies various constraints that could limit or influence future growth and development. Section five is land use. We consider this planning and zoning portion of that, and it illustrates land use and recommendations for future land use. Section six, transportation, describes existing and proposed major thoroughfares and identifies any of our transportation needs. Section seven is utility infrastructure. This provides a logical framework for development, extension, and upgrading of our infrastructure system, which includes water, wastewater, and stormwater. Section eight, housing and neighborhoods. We talked about, a little bit about this with Mr. Bolden's workshop topic. Deals with housing availability and affordability, housing development and redevelopment, and the sustainability of our neighborhoods. Section nine, community facilities and services. This delineates the buildings, staffing, services, issues, and priorities of community services, including the police department, fire department, animal control, public library, and others. Section 10, parks and recreation. As I mentioned, this was updated in 2017 as the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Master Plan. And section 11, historic preservation. This discusses preserving and enhancing our historic and cultural resources. One of the most important aspects of us having a comprehensive plan, if you even ask why you should even have one, is that we are proactive and constantly planning rather than only reacting when a problem arises. So if we start to talk about updating this, we're really off, I mean, we already have a head start because of section 10 with the master plan for the Parks and Recreation and Trails. And we consider section two of the community profile by having all of the new information after next April with the 2020 census. So tonight, my suggestion is council discuss and decide, number one, whether you think updating our comprehensive plan is an important idea to consider, and two, where the next area of attention should be. These plans are very expensive, and if, it's very difficult for our city to afford to do this every five years or so. So I had an idea, since we did start with the Parks and Rec two years ago, that perhaps every year or two, we can tackle one or two of the sections and keep that ongoing. So we're constantly updating and don't have to just work on one whole document every, gosh, 16 years now. That's not a good idea. So this could be a way we could do this. In my opinion, though, we have two pressing options that are things that, I mean, they're all important, but I feel that we have two right now. First, our infrastructure is aging and needs replacing. It's costing more and more to keep it repaired. It's not efficient. And a plan needs to be in place sooner rather than later. This is one of the harder conversations to have, because it's not something new, shiny, and exciting. It's underground, for the most part, and it's so very expensive that we may have to borrow money to upgrade. So it's probably one of the least popular things for us to try and deal with. The second option that I'd like to discuss, it actually straddles two sections, land use and transportation. Mr. Hens did address this, he touched on it when he was talking about economic development. But with I-69 coming, it would be a mistake for city leaders not to be proactive in planning. This would include discussions on zoning, especially around the area of I-69, and working with TechDOT on how we want I-69 to look and to work for us. We have had some informal discussions on an industry and retail mix, so we can capture that traffic. And then I, after I came up with those two options, I thought, you know, there's also a third option, if, if, if we can't decide between the two, because I don't know how to decide between the two. But the third option would be to ask Mr. Jeffers and his staff for a preliminary report and a timeline for each of these proposals, and any possible outside costs, because some of these may require outside consultant's work. So that's where I am in wanting to, to visit this and talk about it. So we can continue to use it as a living document. So let's see, Mr. Bolden, would you like to go first this time?
Okay, I'm, I'm just going to speak on one item here, and that's transportation.
Oh, okay.
One of the things is, I took a survey of ridership on local transportation.
Yes.
And I compared it to other cities within the same population as Nacogdoches. And Lufkin, their ridership doubles Nacogdoches, which is pretty well amazing figure to me, because population-wise, that's not much of a difference. But now, we, we do what they call a demand and response. Nacogdoches lead in that, where they call and say, can you pick me up in here and there? But the regular ridership town compared to ours' population is double in ridership, which, you know, means a lot as far as.
That's for public transportation.
Right. Well, yeah, we pay part of that, though.
Yes, we do.
But that makes a difference in traffic. And, and I hear a lot of complaints now about how much traffic is in Nacogdoches. Not to me, because I spent too much time in Houston. But also, we have, we're not, one of the items is, we're not particular, either a walking community or back-friendly community, and which is part of also the health, being one of the, I think it was called the oldest and healthiest town in Texas, which we may not be, because we don't, we don't really have the sidewalks for either walking or jogging or bicycles. But that was, as a matter of fact, we're going to, we decided that President Strennis is going to do a survey, bus survey. They're gonna have, they're gonna hire surveyors to get on the bus and ask questions to each one of the riders and see if they knew of others, why they don't ride the bus, whatever. By the way, they're paying $15 an hour to do that for four days. So I may be gone for four days. But that, that's my comment on, on the transportation issue, because, you know, I, one time I used to ride a bicycle quite, quite a bit. But I don't really feel like it's that safe here, you know? I mean, it is when you get on an open road, but it, in, in my opinion, like from where I live to downtown, or maybe at North Street, there is no actual place to ride a bicycle. We don't have back lanes, and we don't have sidewalks wide enough to ride a bicycle. That's my comment.
Thank you. So if you wanted to, but do you have an opinion on which one of these, or which part? First of all, do you think we should start updating our, or continue updating our comprehensive plan? And do you have an opinion on where that should start?
I mean, I picked transportation, because I really think that's where it should start, because I, I've seen traffic issues get out of hand from when I was living in Houston. And when I was there, it was gradual, okay? But then it started growing, the economy got better, and it was horrible. And you couldn't even get to the job that you had, well, in a reasonable amount of time. So I think we should update at least the transportation part of it, especially with the sidewalks.
Especially with sidewalks, because this also includes air travel, right? I mean, it's everything that has to do with transportation. Mr. Hens?
I love the idea of bringing as much of an
I love the idea of bringing as much of it in-house as we can, because I really like the, it's a well-done report. It's just that a lot of it does get outdated. It doesn't take that long for it to get outdated. A little bit of city data or Wikipedia gets you most of this information, which is painful because I know how expensive it was. And so, we do have the census coming up. I think that's really helpful. I think we could, it's seemingly, me not doing it, seems like it wouldn't be that hard to update the, a lot of the informational sections pretty inexpensively. And then I like the infrastructure. I'd rather not think about it like everybody else. I'd rather just pretend like it's going to be fine. But when I look back at engineering department, I get a nod. It's not just going to magically be okay. So, I do think that is important. I also like the land use and transportation. The land use, one area that I do see is a pretty significant issue that we have. It feeds right into the housing and neighborhoods. The affordable housing and some of the, some of the issues we have there, we've got to get, we've got to get a little bit of a step on that. I think that's becoming more and more of an issue. It's extremely expensive to be a first-time homeowner here in a way that's really discouraging anybody from staying around once they graduate college. It's almost impossible to go get a job in ISD and to buy a house. That's a problem. And so, I think there are things we can do to fix that, but I think that nestles in nicely if we were to do those two.
Okay.
I will say, I'm very much in favor of working on updating our comprehensive plan. I, you know, ideally, we could do it, do the whole thing every five years. That would certainly be nice, but the costs and resources involved in that are likely prohibitive. But as far as areas to start, I absolutely agree with infrastructure. And the combination of land use and transportation, I think, because those two go hand-in-hand so much, you know, that brings us to three sections to do off the bat. But I think, given the amount of time that it has been since this was created, trying to jump into the updating with maybe more than one or two sections, as much as is feasible, I would certainly like to see. And then with the further updating, trying to keep on a schedule of a section per fiscal year, preferably, so that we don't get to this point, as Mr. Manti pointed out, of having a 16-year-old comprehensive plan, because in 2003, the landscape here was very different. And the reality of I-69 was still very much, you know, out in the future. And it is becoming something that is getting closer and closer, and it's something that we absolutely have to plan for. And part of that planning for that transportation aspect is going to be our land use, and that's why I think those two almost have to be tied together. So, I absolutely support the idea of doing those three sections as quickly as we feasibly can.
It, I, it's my understanding, I think, that if you get involved early with TechDOT and you know, you can have a say in how you want that section to look in your city. And you have a say in possibly the exits and the entrances and feeder roads and all of that type of thing. Is that true to a certain extent?
I'll say Jefferson, it depends.
Okay. No, that's fine.
In some instances.
They will accept our input at any rate.
Standards are different.
Okay. Okay. But if we have the chance to and to have that conversation, that would certainly be beneficial.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Than to just have it done and we do what we want to do after the fact. Ms. Fisher?
Yes. I love what you said about being proactive versus reactive. I think that that's our job as city council. I also love the idea of creating a goal of every year or two years, updating some part of it to have it be the living, breathing document that it should be, because I, I mean, a lot, this is very, very well done, and it's a solid foundation. I do agree that there are certain things that in 16 years have changed such that it requires looking at it again. When we talk about updating, I know Councilmember Hens said he likes the idea of in-housing as much as possible. I agree with that for cost purposes and because we have a lot of expertise in city staff who are not only experts in these fields, but also know our community. So, when we talk about updating, are we talking about one or the other about in-housing or having our staff and our city people look at it versus hiring somebody and spending money on doing it?
I think it depends on, well, I think it depends on the section. But I know there are, there's some of this that would require some outside work. But it would be done, or my idea is, it would be done similar to how we did the master plan for the parks. And that was having several public discussions, so that you do get a lot of public input on what they want their city to look like.
Okay.
So, yes, I think some of it requires some outside monies, but I think it's manageable when it's one section instead of, you know, versus an entire plan.
Right, 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 right. I think in terms of picking between infrastructure and land use and transportation, that's tough because, I mean, with this whole thing, we're talking about being proactive, but with the infrastructure, we are at a point where we have to be, we have to be reactive. I mean, that's what we're doing. We're being reactive. And so, this is something that even though we don't see it, it does require our immediate attention, whereas if we don't prepare well and plan well for I-69 coming, it's going to be a huge missed opportunity. And so, I mean, honestly, I'm really torn. I think that, I think that if I had to pick one, I think that I would, that I would go to infrastructure for the reason that we're at a point where I don't even think we have the opportunity to be proactive, really, anymore. But I do, I do agree that those are two sections, two pressing sections that justify updating and looking at.
Well, it may be that we need a little more information before we actually make a choice, you know? And it may be that because, I know we are limited in staff, but it may be that if we can work on both at the same time, because, I don't know, if any of it overlaps or there's, there are some differences in the information that's required. So, would it be possible for us to have information on both of those possibilities with appropriate timelines and possible expenses?
I hear nobody.
How, does anyone have a comment about that idea? I just don't have enough information.
I think that's great. I think it'd be really helpful to know what of infrastructure, land use, transportation, what of that could be done in-house? And if so, how much of a strain is that? Is that a nine-month project to get something useful? And we'd still need to bring in a consultant versus we really don't have the horsepower to do that, so we need to outsource all of that. I think that giving that kind of a basis would be helpful.
Okay. I agree.
Did anyone want to briefly, we've got about 10 more minutes, talk about any other part of the comprehensive plan that might be something that is, I don't know, important to you or something that you would rather see us look at?
I feel like you really, I mean, in terms of urgency, I feel like you really hit the nail on the head on the things that we need to be focusing on.
Okay. Any further comments? There's my agenda. Okay. Then we will move to agenda item number nine, consider council work session topic selection for future city council work sessions. One of the things I would, I would like for us to think about, either perhaps not selecting something new to talk about, but maybe if we have feedback ready on some of the things, you know, we, I hate for us to talk about something and then we just leave it.
Uh huh.
You know, so I don't know, we need to ask Mr. Jeffers if it would be possible for at least maybe one of the previous discussion topics, if there would be some information ready for us from staff by our next workshop session.
We can bring limited information on just about everything that was discussed previously, and some of it will be more detailed. Some of it's not quite ready to have a full-blown discussion because it hasn't been vetted with the public, but also the vetting with the public is your job.
Well, for example, I know when Mr. Hens did his, led his workshop topic on economic development, that covered so much. There was a lot there. And so, I mean, I would be okay with just one or two portions of that instead of waiting for a response to the whole thing unless you want to work that differently.
No problem.
Mr. Hens wants to work it differently.
No, that'd be great.
Okay. So, now, can we do that on two topics? Or do we need to discuss or rediscuss another topic? Because we, the council had selected or elected to discuss two, have time for two topics. But next time, we could, I mean, it would allow us more discussion time, in my opinion, if we heard, you know, got information from staff and we could have a more detailed discussion about that time, that subject.
And you're making an excellent point, Mary. We don't need to get out too far ahead of ourselves without bringing closure to some of the proposals. And so, with economic development, very broad topic that will be never-ending. And economic development by itself can take up the work session. But if the council wants to add a second topic for a report, we can certainly accommodate.
One thing that might be helpful, I had asked staff to look into the farmers market development, and then I know they've gotten a good bit of that research done. So, I'd love to have that as a focus if possible.
Is that good?
Yes, that would be one of the items.
Okay. Okay. That sounds great. Any other thoughts? No?
Not right now.
Mr. Bolden?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay. Are we having executive session?
No, ma'am.
Ah. Well, once again, thank all of you that have attended tonight and participated and shared your thoughts with us. And that concludes our meeting for September 17th, 2019.